All right, welcome to the Standing Policy Committee for the CCSD Board of Directors. And I welcome new people here today, and I'm so excited. Cool, all right, I call, I'm calling the meeting to order. We have one, two, three, we have all but one member here. So we do have a quorum. I'm gonna make a very short chair report. The first thing I need to tell you all is that the policy that this committee has been working on for, oh, I don't know, three years at least, right? Probably, well, anyway, response to, response to correspondence. Was, it was approved by the board without any edits, so congratulations. Yeah, you guys, you guys are so good. So I think that was the first thing I wanted to report. And then the other things I wanted to report, remember, at our last meeting, we had, we had a list of policies that we had been working on, and I wanted to make sure that you all knew where we were in working for those, with those policies. So I just want to give you an update. The whistle blowing policies included in the personnel policies, which are being reviewed by the district staff and Liberty Cassidy. The purchasing policy is brand new. It was, there it was, and staff worked on what was going on. I don't think the, the contractor or the consultant had anything to do with purchasing policy. But a lot of it really didn't have much to do with what we were actually doing here. And so I think Ms. Dodson is the one who has updated and probably our GM too, so. Thank you, but it is not at a point to.
Are we getting a chance to see it before it goes to the board?
Absolutely, I would not ever take any policy to the board without you all making your comments. The third one is the social media policy, it's finalized and being reviewed by district staff. So you will get a chance to take a look at that when it's ready for us. And then the internet and email policy is finalized and has been incorporated into the CSDA policy. Once it's reviewed and approved by, by the committee, it will go through the meet and confer process with IAFF and SEIU, those are the unions, right? Okay, all right, so any questions about that? Any public comment about that report? Nope, all right, do we have any ad hoc subcommittee reports? I don't think we do. So committee member communications, what do you want to talk about? What do you want to let us know about?
Um, and I'm gonna bring this up again later, and this is sort of off base. But I don't know how many people watched the NCAC or were aware of the NCAC meeting, last NCAC meeting. But the information presented there on the wind farm is something everybody should listen to. And, and, because quite frankly, it will affect you. So, but that's something I want to talk about a little bit when we, as we move through, we've got some things on.
Okay, great, thank you, anyone else? Nope. Is there any public comment on the committee member communications? Nope, all right, let's go to public comment. This is a time when members of public may address the committee on any item of interest within the jurisdiction of the committee. We can't discuss or act on any of those items, but it's a really good, really important time for things that are not on the, on the agenda to be addressed with the committee. Nope, nothing on public comment for the computer? No, we don't have anybody. Okay, anybody else?
From, yes.
This is on an agenda item though, so.
We'll go there.
Time for that?
Not yet.
Yeah.
We'll go there very soon. Anybody else? Okay, while we are doing public comment, I just want to welcome our general manager and Ms. Dodson and two of our very important water and wat- water, water and wastewater people. Yeah, so would you just introduce yourselves in case nobody knows?
Great, no, thank you, Deborah, nice to be here, yeah, this is Jim Green, Utilities Director for Water and Wastewater.
Thank you, Director Scott, and I'm Tristan Reaper, I'm the Program Manager for the Utilities and Engineering Department.
Okay.
Cool.
And do you want to introduce, yeah, go ahead.
Rich Devega, just a Cambria resident. Oh, you want me to introduce?
Just say hello, yeah.
Member of the Board of Directors in the Water District of the CCSD. And Mr. Devega, by the way, did run for the Board of Directors back in 2000.
Rich, how long have you been a community member?
Full time since 2005, but we owned property and this has been here regularly since 1983.
Wonderful.
Got through the waterway. If miracles do happen as well, and I have my extended family here in another home in town, daughter, son, long grandkids.
Very good.
Well, welcome. Thanks for coming.
Can I be asked?
Yes.
Rick, could you, Rich, could you give me your last name, real?
B as in dog, A, V as in Victor, E, G, A.
Devega, just like it sounds, thank you.
Most people get D E.
Oh, I see.
And small b, one word.
Oh, one word, thank you.
Okay. Let's go ahead then to the consent agenda. And I'm sure you've all had a chance to review the minutes, and I, I, I think Ms. Dodson has, did you say you had some comments for the minutes? Okay, so does anyone here have any questions about the minutes? No? You have a typo?
That always is any other substantial.
I'm, I'm, I maybe circled it, no, which, where is it?
Under item four A, when it talks about the motion, the timing got in there twice. Because he, policy blah, 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 corresponds to the board, and then parenthesis, well, that's the timing, it should, it's, it's repeated at the end, which is where it's supposed to. Just, just enough to add to.
I, I don't even know that that's a typo, but.
Well, I could confuse people, I suppose. That was the only thing I had.
Okay, any other comments? Is there anyone from the public that want to make, that wants to make a public comment about the minutes? If not, let, but I have a motion to approve them with the, with the typo correction.
So who?
Okay, all those in favor? All right, thank you. Let's go to, I think what everyone's here for, is our first agenda item under regular business, that's four A. And that, and that item is review and discussion of the CCSD owned vehicle policy.
Is the edited and staff updated version in the agenda?
I don't know.
Do we have our red line?
It's very much, yeah, yeah, yes.
Red line is in the, very good.
Yeah. So, um, I'm sure you all have read through it, and you may have comments, so let me know what you think.
Does someone want to just kind of start at one A and kind of go block by block?
Yeah, you want to go ahead and kind of lead us through it?
Sure, absolutely. I think this is a long overdue, like many of our policies have been in place for probably twenty plus years. They've, they've run a little long on the tooth and are probably not as accurate and as pertinent to today's times as they need to be. One of them is definitely the CC owned, a CCSD owned vehicle policy. My thought was to have some discussion over this, maybe several. I don't want to be too quick to rush to judge on some things, but I'd love to get communities' input on this and thought process. And then we can kind of explain, like, the necessitating of district vehicles for on-call operators and so forth. But if we just kind of want to start at the top with purpose, and we'll kind of make edits as we go. Like I said, we provided some staff edits in there, kind of, we looked at some language from just like twenty other municipalities. We're targeting our size municipalities. A lot of municipalities that are our size are considered small. We have a very intricate water and wastewater system, as you know. We have a very difficult wastewater plant, it's a, it's a grade three plant. Our water treatment facilities, when we run the Santa Roses, are grade three plants. So it takes a higher level operator to operate those plants. And so with that in mind, we tried to pick some agencies, municipalities that were similar in size, nature, and then difficulty range as well. So with that, we'll start off with purpose, which is one A, the policy of the Board of Directors for the Cambria Community Services District establishes policies and procedures for using CCSD owned vehicles. For the purpose of this policy, vehicles leased or rented by the CCSD are considered CCSD owned vehicles. We did some small little punctuation changes in there, but I think the purpose is is equitable and has, you know, a nice ring to it, that there's many edits. We'd love to take your thoughts.
Seemed okay to me, I, you know, as I was reading too, it's actually most, I have no questions. Down, down the way.
Well, we really start to get in the meat of it here with Section Two Vehicle Usage General. A, all CCSD employees are required to have and maintain a valid California driver's license. An employee shall follow all law rules. We just put jurisdictions, laws, rules, and regulations, we kind of shortened that up a little bit, worded a little bit more appropriately. While operating a vehicle on CCSD business, any fines or other penalties incurred by an employee shall be the responsibility of the employee.
You're constipated, it's your problem.
I mean, obviously with any items that might be wrong with the vehicle, like if there's a tail. We, we have a very comprehensive vehicle maintenance policy within the Utilities Department where, you know, those things usually don't slide by for months on end or weeks on end.
Question, if, if, for example, you do get pulled over for a taillight or something like that, I'm assuming the employee then reports that immediately, their supervisor, and the five day that probably would be issued, would that be, you know, what would be the normal course action for the employee in that?
A little bit to turn in the citation, whatever, we'd obviously have like a formal form, we'd write up that on, and then we take it to the general manager for.
I mean, just, just, I mean, just so long as the employee doesn't get slammed for not, you know, getting five day in and out.
Right, absolutely.
Because I mean, while it's leased, while, while in effect is a CSD vehicle, I'm assuming the five day gets written in the person that was driving.
I would, yeah, I'm not.
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, yeah, you know, if I got a, if I got a five day, I'm driving a CSD truck, and I get five day, I'm gonna want to make sure that gets handled within that five days, so I don't.
Absolutely.
Find myself on FBI water posters.
The no-fly list.
I have a question. Um, when, when was the last time this was updated?
I think it's an O seven document, yeah.
Anything?
When's question on your usage of the vehicle? When one takes it out, is it not inspected every morning before you leave? The status of it meets all the lights, the horns, and whatever.
We do, we do.
And whatever from previous people that had it, or if it changes pans, is there an inspection report to sign?
We do, Haley years ago came up with a vehicle checklist. Each operator, they kind of have their own vehicles that are assigned to them. They kind of, they put in their safety gear and their right size appropriate stuff, so they usually have their own vehicle. So, yeah, they are doing that checklist daily. If there's someone else that would operate that, they would in turn start a new checklist for that day.
Just, you see, if you keep track of that, so you, like you said, if your headlights, brake lights out, you need to check that before the day, so you're not operating it during that day and night, it's that problem.
What, what we have internally, if, if you come across something on a vehicle that's not up to snuff, is, is a headlight out, a taillight out, it's not operating properly, we immediately take that out of the rotation, and we schedule service for it or proper repairs. Yeah, we don't, we don't even want that going out on the highway.
Right, that's, yeah, on documentation.
Absolutely.
Someplace. It doesn't say that in here.
Well, each department has their own internals, so the fire department has very unique vehicle checkout.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying that it's a, you should have a checklist, that's all, I didn't say what I had to say. That's what I'm saying.
Right, each department has their own specific policies about their own vehicles.
And, yeah. Observe the checklist daily, whatever, that's all.
I'd just believe with this, but if you license your vehicles, are they subject to the normal smog check?
Absolutely.
So.
Yes.
Is that, is that every time the thing gets these licensed, or is that just, I forget?
It's, the smogs in every other year cycle, so we follow, yeah, they're California state exempt vehicles, but they still follow all the jurisdictional rules of the state, yeah. Yeah, there's no gross polluter leniency or anything for that.
We've got big vehicles.
We did.
Those two fifties and, and all that stuff that, you know, kicks.
We have a forty foot long back trailer that weighs.
Exactly.
Thirty thousand pounds as well.
And, and at the end of the day, those are not the kind of vehicles that are going to be going electric at times.
The state would like that, but yes, yeah.
Well, it's coming, it's coming, but it, but it's not here.
Yeah, absolutely.
I got it, an observation. The way I read this, this applies not only to district owned vehicles, but to any employee while operating a vehicle on CCSD business.
Correct. Yeah, so if you're going to use a personal vehicle to go down to, I don't know, like a county meeting, yeah, that would, these, this is still applicable. Yeah, cool. Absolutely, good, yeah, yeah. We should probably note that in there too, I don't think that.
It's clear, but I, you might want to, at first I thought, oh, they forgot something, but then when I realized, it probably applies to all.
CCSD owned vehicle policies, so.
I think we should keep it specific to CCSD owned, and maybe we need another policy for when people do business in their, in their own vehicle.
Well, then you'd need to change the wording, so instead of while operating a vehicle on CCSD business, which would imply my vehicle as well as CCSD owned, that's what, that's what I saw in there.
Where, where is that?
If you read the C, it's the last, it's the second to last sentence. While operating a vehicle on CSD business.
On B or C?
Oh, I'm sorry, to, to A.
Oh, and to A?
Yeah, 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 yeah. So you could either say that, or just make that a call out, that, that it applies to any vehicle, which I thought was perhaps an attempt.
How about just put any instead of A?
Any vehicle?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that makes it very clear. Can we do that? Let's see, is there any case where you wouldn't follow all rules and regulations? Probably not.
No, so I think we should put any.
No, it suggests that you have, checklist must be completed daily.
I have a comment on the checklist question. That to me is more operational, and that is how you accomplish it, not that, I mean, it would be a policy that all the vehicles shall be in operating order and shall all.
First and ask to do the checklist.
How that is done.
I don't care how it's done.
Well, that's my point, so, so I don't know that you would want to specify.
Does it say in there you need a checklist? Therefore, I could get, jump on a vehicle and take off, and things that go all the, whatever, I said, well, I didn't know I had to do a checklist. That's why my point is, it's a requirement that this vehicle is indeed acceptable to drive. It's part of this meeting all the regulations, and it would be to have a checklist.
Well, I see your point, except that it seems to me that is an operational issue, it's not a policy issue.
How about some of the other committee members?
And, and that was what I was trying to get at, because each department has their own operational guidelines when it comes to vehicles. Fire departments is very specific, and they have a very different mission with their vehicles and water. So they do have specific operational checklist, policies, and procedures within the fire department walls that govern their vehicles. And then when we take away this, this is more of an overarching policy, and the same with water, same with F and R. You know, F and R operates trackers, failers, you know, it's hard to prescribe an operational checklist from this ten dollar quote view, when you start getting down to the minutia of the departmental vehicles, or the division vehicles, if that makes sense.
And even in utilities, we have different vehicles, like we have our crane truck, which has a different set of checklist than, you know, your half ton pickup. And, but how long is the back, back on?
The back on checklist is long.
Yeah.
And we have, and we have standby vehicles that don't get. They get checked out every other day, or there's month lists, or there's week lists, you know, because based on their operational use. So that's why we take it more down to an.
If you wanted to address this concern, you could just incorporate a reference that says something like, we'll review and sign if that's, if there was a signature, the applicable division vehicle checklist, or applicable division.
Or district.
And district's equipment or vehicle, because the tracker is, is that a vehicle or not?
Hear from the other committee members?
Well, I, I don't think it, it, you know, it hurts to emphasize it, it, in the policy, that we just specifying the policy that, you know, the expectations are that vehicles will go through normal checklist process per the operation.
Type of vehicle slash department or some.
Whatever, you know, whatever, whatever your operation is, whatever your operation is, whatever your operation is, do you have your own guidelines for that? So I think you could just simply say, you know, it, it, you know, it's the expectation of this policy that all vehicles will go through everything for the checklist. And.
Per department.
Per, per, per department guidelines or something, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Count.
I think, in my opinion, we're overthinking this point and, you know, beating it even more unmercifully. Then it needs to be done.
Yes.
The department managers are probably perfectly capable of making sure that the headlights and horns and things work on their, on their vehicles.
Yeah, that's not the question, Jim.
I, I personally, my opinion is that we don't need to add any particular language regarding checklist.
I wholeheartedly disagree with that, it's a safety factor, for the installation of this vehicle, even the grounds. It hasn't been checked, that you're not allowed to drive it. And if somebody says you got to check it, then I'm gonna drive off, and, well, heck, that's too bad, my wheel nuts are loose, or whatever, wheels fall off.
Well, but you're not, you're not going to have a daily checklist where you get out the torque wrench and, and test all the nuts on every vehicle before you get in it. I would, I could be wrong about that, but that would normally be something that someone does when they get in their car, if we dare.
Yeah, so let's, let's go on, I mean, you have a checklist, question mark, so.
Yeah, we've taken some good notes.
Yeah.
B states, individuals not employed by the CCSD or working for the CCSD as a private contractor shall not travel in CCSD vehicles unless approved by the general manager. So I vote to strike that, there's, there's no reason why we need to have, most of our, especially in utilities, any of our consultants, our engineers, our contractors that come out, most of them, especially since COVID, they prefer to be in their own vehicles. I've never, internally, we've kind of had our own policy, like, we, we just don't drive others around.
Yeah.
For just liability's sake.
So what you're saying is that you just like to strike B?
I think I put in here, I don't know if you've seen my, I had the notes, but yeah, it's written out, but restate to include permissions for passenger ride along inclusive to consultants and contractors. But that's, that's a point, again, we can argue, you, just by nature, I've said, let's not put people in our vehicles.
Yeah.
I think that's the way I've got it, is great, it's very clear, it says individuals not employed by the CCSD will never operate a CCSD.
Yeah, I think that's.
Keeps our insurance company happy.
Sure.
Keeps Matt happy.
Do you all like, do you all like the, the restate to include permissions for passenger riding?
I don't know that we need to worry about.
Business related, yeah, right.
Right.
So it's my impression, is that what it says?
No.
Permissions for passengers ride along inclusive to consultants and contractors, in other words, you know, if, if, if we're, if we're both going to the same spot, there, and, and you're consulting for CSD, is there any reason that they, that person shouldn't ride along in the vehicle?
Well, I can provide an anecdote, there was an engineer at Santa Barbara came up, brilliant guy, he came up in his BMW Z three, and we're taking out to the SWF after our March tenth storms. Well, we had some divots and, and some, some road issues there on our, on our class two base road that there's no way he was getting in there. But Tristan, on the more legal side of it, when we hire these consultants, there's some clause in there, insurance, providing insurance, and maybe you can elaborate on that, that would.
Yeah, either, yeah, we require them, yeah, as part of the consulting clause, we require them to be insured to ride along our vehicles. So they're, they're covered by their, their insurance.
Yes.
Shouldn't something happen?
Yes.
So stating individuals not employed by CCSD shall never operate CCSD vehicles except for individuals performing approved maintenance repair services on the vehicle, what do you want to add?
Well, I think, I think it's. Yeah, it's clear, unless, I mean, I'll take.
No, but, no, once again, I.
I think what I want to, I'm sorry, what I really want to make clear is, there's no other outside consultants, engineers, contractors, driving CCSD vehicles.
Right.
Period. The occasional ride along, you know, we want to be inclusive of that. When their own vehicles could make it through our terrain, but other than that, there's, there's no reason to have any of that. But CCSD employees driving CCSD vehicles.
Absolutely.
And so I, I do want to underscore what Mr. Townsend said earlier about getting too specific and directive and doing other people's.
You want to stay out of the.
Yes, yes, stay out of the, so I just want to underscore that, thank you.
Do their professional work, right.
Okay, see.
If a motor vehicle accident occurs while on CCSD business, the appropriate law enforcement agency shall be contacted immediately, and every attempt shall be made to have a report completed. If the law enforcement agency declines to prepare a report, the employee shall record the name of the party contacted at the law enforcement agency, the time they were contacted, and a written report of the facts and circumstances surrounding the accident shall be completed by the employee at the earliest opportunity. The employee's report will include the contact information of all parties involved in the accident, including vehicle description and insurance coverage. The employee supervisor shall be notified of the accident at the earliest opportunity, but in any event, no later than by the next business day. And might, might want to put a clause in there, like, if you can't tell your direct supervisor, I don't know if Matt needs another docket on his desk, but we could inform general manager, or I, I, I don't think we want to wait to report to the next day.
Okay.
That, that's, that's kind of a immediacy.
I'm, I'm the earliest of, the latest.
One brief comment, in the first sentence, which reads, if a motor vehicle accident occurs while on CCSD business, I would suggest that, that be changed to if a motor vehicle accident occurs while in a CCSD vehicle.
Yeah.
Given that the vehicles are, some of the vehicles are occasionally used for commuting, some of them are, the, the, the commuting policy allows for de minimis use, personal use of the vehicle.
Right.
Might include like a Home Depot run or something. I know when I had a company vehicle, it did not care. So I would just suggest that rather than on CCSD business, it says in a CCSD vehicle, because that'll cover everything.
Including any other accidents.
And if somebody's in their personal vehicle, then it wouldn't be covered under the CCSD owned vehicle. Minor, minor tweak.
Thank you. With supervisor responsible for having the accident, and this is what was stricken, being reported to the risk manager or his or her designee at the earliest opportunity. Or his or her designee at the earliest opportunity, but in any event, reported to the risk manager. Or his or her designee at the earliest opportunity in the event. So I think we. Move that language around there.
And that means that if somebody gets hurt in the accident, um, so the supervisor then is responsible for reporting.
Correct.
Okay. I kind of don't like. The word earliest opportunity, I don't.
I don't either. I think it needs to be like as soon as possible or.
Yeah, I mean, if the employee needs to do an employee report, that should happen within the week, I would think.
Let's see.
You know, if you need to do a full on, I mean, you know.
Well, what I would like to do is to make it the supervisor's responsibility. To make sure that it gets done within a week.
Yeah.
Because like I said, somebody could be in the hospital. Yeah.
Cause after a week, you know, you, you start to forget details, you know. I mean, I know I do, so.
Somehow, I don't know how you want to write that, but.
We think a one week is, um, adequate timeframe?
I, I do.
I, I think, I think.
I was thinking shorter.
I think end of business day is appropriate.
Yeah.
This is not, I think you want to set for a week. Okay. I, I was just.
I think, I think within the next business day kind of covers a couple of things. If you're driving home and you hit a deer at dusk. You're through that business day, but by the end close of next business day.
Yeah.
Mister Heineck.
There's no, yeah, there's no argument there, but I agree totally. A timeline.
That was the first thing that was jumped out at me.
Okay, alright. Smoking is absolutely not permitted in any CCS vehicles at any time. I don't know anybody that even smoked.
And I'm wondering if you want to address eating.
We could, um, fortunately the waste flutter guys, when they're doing waste water work, don't do a lot of hand to mouth when they're doing that, so. We don't have any real issues on the water side of that, although we had an employee years ago that, um. We, we had a mouse in a truck because he kept best food wrappers in there and.
I, I would recommend.
I mean, I, I, I like that.
The only devil the advocate piece I plays is that a lot of these folks are working up odd hours.
In pouring rain.
Pouring rain, you know, so. Having the flexibility to like cram a sandwich down in your truck and go right back to work, cause, cause a lot of times it could be a water repair, emergency line repair. And they're not going to get their sixty minute lunch.
So.
So, so we could add something in there like.
While operating.
Yeah, while operating.
Is that what you're referring to? Watch them eat a burrito while they're driving?
Yeah. Well, it's distracted, but I mean, many times like your lunch is in that vehicle going to get parts on an emergency day.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine if they're not.
To keep food debris out of the truck.
No. Does that make sense to you? How many times have I almost had an accent? And when it's somebody else's car.
So in section F, I don't know if it's mentioned somewhere else, you could least, uh, F. To add in a piece, you know, all CCS, you got a vehicle will be operated in a safe manner or. Or I don't know if that's said somewhere else in the beginning piece of document, but you could try to tie in. Not only will we, will we not drive it in an unsafe condition, we also will operate it within, uh, you know.
Put something like, I don't know, I hate to sound so goofy, but say like this is a distraction free zone, which includes cell phones, headphones.
Cell phone use, eating while driving.
We can call them, all lump that in under one letter.
You might include that.
Does that sound too cliche if we put distraction free zone or?
We can get together. We could just earmark distracted driving.
Yeah.
Way to work it into F.
There you go.
Good.
Or add another letter.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When I expose myself by saying I eat while I drive?
Worse, I, I, I can't tell you how many years. In my commuting, I saw people putting makeup.
Oh, yeah. Your guys are not to put makeup on while they're.
Well, you know, lipstick on a pig. Thank you.
I, I just, you know, I, I, it just always made me shudder when I saw somebody doing this, you know, they're riding down the freeway.
And poking their eye out with a mascara.
God help me.
Okay.
I see people reading.
Well, if, if you're looking at your cell phone.
They're still reading, yeah, but I mean, I've like seen the Tribune and someone laugh as they're driving like, okay.
No.
Alright.
Well, okay.
And it wasn't a Tesla, so.
This is the GM's.
I am so impressed.
No, the district bought it, I just.
Oh, cool. Only on weekends.
Is it yours? It, it's not yours. It's a pretty one. Okay, let's go ahead.
Or smoking, yeah, okay, sorry, next page, I expanded. E, all CCSD vehicles shall be appropriately marked with CCID identification unless otherwise approved by the general manager. Here's where I, I think it's just all CCSD vehicles shall be appropriately marked, period.
Period, yeah, I mean, yeah.
You've got our.
No, the general manager.
One foot diameter logo.
Yeah.
So cross off the.
Know why there would be any vehicles that wouldn't be.
I think, um, there's.
General managers.
Yeah, I think there was a time when there's a district vehicle that admin used that wasn't stickered.
Oh, what sticker now, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, all distributed.
Yeah.
Have decals.
Yeah, I put the ones on the current. Sorry, except for the back bumper, that was Haley. Uh, no CCSD vehicle shall be driven if it is known to be in unsafe condition. Uh, again, we're kind of wrapping around to our, our prior, but any mechanical problems related to a CCSD vehicle shall be immediately reported. When using CCSD vehicles, employees shall not abuse the vehicle in any way. Um, I think this is redundant. I think we need to kind of tie it into, um, two.
The one previously.
Yeah, what is that? Two, section A.
Yeah, I'd probably tie.
Where we were talking about. I was thinking B. B is the smoking is not provided, yeah, so B like Bravo. I think that would be where.
That was the E, I think, for the smoking one.
She was.
D, okay, you're saying.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, this F really speaks to the vehicle being in unsafe, so.
Right.
Just to address.
Actually comes in.
I, I think you'll see there's a couple, um, parallel lines in here that get redundant here, so if we can clean that up and.
Yeah.
Kind of see it more articulately in one place and we'll be done.
G.
Uh, G, use of a CCSD vehicle is prohibited while on vacation or on other leave, transporting family members except. Where such persons are also CCSD employees or otherwise unofficial CCSD business. And CCSD owned vehicles is also prohibited except in emergency situation. Um, I, I don't see where any of this is really applicable anymore, you know, you're, you're not using this, you, you're not to use a vehicle while on paid leave.
Yeah.
Um, transporting family members, no. I guess if you had, uh, CCSD employees that were related and working in a, in a function, I'd. Yeah, I'm, I'm not seeing anything that's transporting friends and other persons, except I think we just need to have something in here that says. Uh, use of a CCSD vehicle is prohibited, um, while on vacation or leave, uh, transporting any. Anyone other than, um, uh, district employees.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if somebody wanted to carpool or something, that would be great.
Yeah, yeah, and we, we actually have that in modern, so all this couple of the others, so yeah.
Mm-hmm, question Jim, do we under cases where, uh, there, what, what, there's, uh. Someone who is not a CCSD employee but is otherwise unofficial CCSD.
Contractors, you know.
Yeah, occasionally, yeah, like we had that and that kind of ties in where, where I think we stated that clearly up there, but I mean.
It's the issue of passengers.
Any input or ideas to make that concise?
About Jimmy Panetta that would show up.
Yeah, you're not going to tell the congressman that. Would you approve that, Jim?
So you wanna, so what do you want to do with G?
I, I think we need to kind of recraft that little. Yeah, for, for business own.
Right.
Yeah.
Otherwise, yeah, can't use it.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think it can condense. What's in there?
Moving to H, when utilizing a CCSD or privately owned vehicle for travel, the vehicle may be used to attend meals. And other activities directly relating to the training, conference, or other travel function.
Yeah.
Pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Just, I have a question.
Yes.
Let us say, in some of these travel, this is approved travel up for training or conferences, things like that. Uh, cases where an employee is taking a spouse with them, which sometimes does happen. Uh, and they're using their own vehicle.
Right.
Um, I guess what I, that's why I just have this question, uh, what about family members? Who are for some reason are included in this, in the travel.
Well, right, so if you're, if you're going to, let's say Anaheim is having the AWWA convention. And you want your wife to go along and see her relatives while you're there, I, I think you're, at, at, at that point, me personally. You're not taking a CCSD vehicle, you're, you're at a, you'll take mileage and take your own vehicle.
I see.
At that point.
So there's a mileage reimbursement policy.
Put that in there though, in other words, so that, that is, and if that is the preferred way, in other extent, you would want it to.
Yeah, I mean, we could do that, um, it also, you know, but it's also highlighted that they can't have.
Well, in other words, you can't, if you're gonna take your plus one with you, use your own car.
Yeah, okay, that's easy. Yeah, you default to section two B or whatever.
But if, if we want redundancy in there to highlight the fact that, you know, people would take home personal vehicle if you're to take.
Well, that would probably be good.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to redundancy.
Save your trouble later.
Yeah.
But you all know, we're not gonna be looking at approving anything, this is just.
This is kind of a living document here that we're editing.
So do you currently enforce, cause it was not the case in the past?
Oh, no, it wasn't.
Employees, oh, I dropped my kids off on the way. I dropped them off at school.
I think, I think it's too great of a liability.
If it's enforced.
I, I would.
To the best of your knowledge.
To the best of our knowledge, you know, again, we have a lot of, the nature of Cambria is that a lot of our operators and flat out staff don't live in Cambria. So in order to actually see that to enforce it, you would have to be able to.
Have, have an accident, then you would know.
Or, or, or do you live in the same town they do and you sell them around your kids? The only thing we could look at, uh, later on is GPS on the vehicles. And our GPS tracking systems, you know, a lot of our industry companies use, and we can tell how fast they're going, where they're going.
Yeah, they'll give you a weekly report.
You won't put it on the board of directors cars, right?
I, 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 I'm skipping ahead cause we're talking about this here, de minimis thing coming up.
What, yeah, I know, that was a really great word.
Yeah. But de minimis, do we need to?
Well, are we on three yet?
Number three, no, I know we're not there, but, but we're talking about driving people around in CSD cars. Yeah, cause I can see commuting, for example, if I'm commuting. You know, I'm coming on my way home, I stop at the grocery store to pick some things that's on the way home, is that a de minimis stuff? What is a de minimis?
Well, I think we really do need to define de minimis.
You, I, I mean, we're, we're not there yet, but it's in the IRS. You, you, we're talking about use of CSD vehicles for other things.
Yeah, I think this into IRS fifteen B, kind of clarify that.
Yeah. Okay, so we're done with H?
Yes, we're moving to section three.
Travel with this capital, uh, does that need to be defined more precisely as all? District approved travel or anything, or is it sufficient to just say, I mean, is this a term of, I mean, the.
When A.
I, I think a district authorized travel would be kind of a good.
Oh, that's.
Cause if you're doing this, I, let's provide some context, so, um, I'm going to the AWWA convention on Wednesday and Thursday. I have to fill out a travel request, it has to be approved, authorized by the general manager. So the, these, you, you don't get in that vehicle and take off without signed documented authorization. So I think we put.
Even though the capital kind of suggested.
Let me just say one thing, and that was, um. When I went to a conference, um, it was down in, do you remember where it was? Um, by Palm Springs Indian Wells, something like that, now it's not where I was, but anyway, I took my husband. And when you go to a conference, you only get mileage going and coming. You don't get mileage to go, uh, eat somewhere, you only get that mileage that's based on. The maps or whatever, so you aren't getting reimbursed. Yeah, cause I tried and Haley wouldn't.
Yeah, I've, it's always been portal to portal.
Yeah.
To and from, in between is kind of.
Yeah, yeah.
That's just kind of the.
Just to let people know that that's what happens.
Right.
Okay, are we on three?
Three A, in order to provide as prompt of a response as possible for emergency situations, CCSD employees on standby. And whenever else it is deemed necessary by a department manager shall use a CCSD vehicle for travel between the employee's home and place of work. Uh, this next sentence was stricken, uh, in areas and cases where a department manager uses a CCSD owned vehicle for personal use. Uh, approval from the general managers, I want that just stripped.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's where we're passing.
Um, during times of such use, the employee's personal use of the vehicle is limited directly to commuting and de minimis personal use. Such use is limited to necessary tasks, a short duration. And shall be, basically I cut that out and just fully minimized. But we can, I know this is, this is, we're getting kind of the meat of the topics here, so I think we can start to dive into de minimis and.
Does it define it in the law?
I think the fifteen B, the IRS code, that's what I just had up here, it's a, of course, like every IRS code, it's a long document.
Yeah, but I just gave these guys the.
Did you give them the Cliff Notes version?
Yeah, no, well, I, the general manager helped.
Well, then, in the, yeah, in the, in this policy, it's for to that.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah, just for.
As defined in.
Could I ask a question?
Sure. So I'm, I'm being very nice to you. No, it's okay.
So. What is the definition, what is the expectation of an employee on call or on standby? Are they expected to, well, first of all, what is an on-call shift? Is it an eight hour shift, four hour shift? It depends. I mean.
On-call is a twenty-four hour shift for eleven days. Or, I'm sorry, nine days.
So they're not scheduled for regular work, that they're on call, or they're doing regular work?
They're doing regular work on call, so, um.
Yeah.
Waste was a bit different than water because the, so basically the call phone, you, you're married to that thing. If that thing rings, texts, you answered, you're. If that thing rings, texts, you answered, you respond to it immediately. The call begins at four P M. Thursday for water, um waste water used to trade in the morning on Thursdays.
Yeah, I think we'd get handed in the morning on Thursdays.
So so basically, you you have that call phone, obviously, we have A schedules, we have B schedules, um so the Fridays off are, you know, that altered. And uh the weekend shift, so both water and wastewater have, you you come in, you evaluate all your assets, you do rounds, you do checklists. You you do all your manual initiation of pumps, whatever, and that's a five-hour shift for each uh on Saturday and Sunday respectively.
Okay, but so you're in pay status. For twenty-four hours a day for eleven days, is that what she said?
Um you're you're working your regular nine-hour shift, so we're nine eighty, so your Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday are nine. Your eight-hour day on Friday, your Saturday is overtime, and your Sunday is overtime. And any other additional callouts to that?
Okay, so on your, you work your nine-hour day and you're off at.
Four thirty.
Then you're the on-call person, okay, something critical happens at seven P M. That's on you, right? You're supposed to be where, not not where are you coming to? You have, you're the on-call person, you've taken that truck home. Are you supposed to be sitting at home with that truck, or are you living your life?
You're supposed to be within a forty-five minute response. So if you are, don't have the truck in your possession, you must be able to get it and then get to the CCSD. It was a service area within forty-five minutes. So yes, there have been instances where you go to dinner at a friend's house and you and your wife drive separate car because you might get that call.
Well, you shouldn't even be driving the CCSD car.
You shouldn't be at your friend's. You need to have your CCSD, so this is why on-call is kind of tricky for all the operators, especially for water and wastewater. Basically, and this is why a lot of the senior operators have relegated it to some of the newer upper incomers, um because they're tired of it, you're it's a week out of your life every month where you you're you're really married to the phone and you're married to the job. I I've said, I you you're not driving that, you know, if if you live in Templeton, you're not going down to Slow to eat. And oh, shoot, I got a call and then you're coming back, I mean.
To circle back around on on that, so forty-five minute response time to get back to the district, and what is the on-call pay? It it's a standby pay of what?
Is it twenty-five?
I think it's thirty-five.
Is it thirty-five, so it's a standard daily fee. Fee, yeah, charge of thirty-five dollars.
So so the employees, if they're within that forty-five minute response time, whether they leave the vehicle at home and drive two miles away to dinner, if they get the call and get back home with the vehicle and then drive into work. Then they're within that that policy. I don't want to saddle employees that are on call that they can't for thirty-five dollars or twenty-five dollars, tell them they can't go to their son's softball game or baseball game or whatever it is. You know, but at the same time, we don't want them driving the vehicle all over Moro Bay or Paso. So within that frame of, if they can get back to the district, no matter what they're doing, as long as they're not drinking wine or beer, any of that nonsense, right? If they're within that frame of forty-five forty-five minute response time, then yeah, so they can they can go wherever they want in that radius, whatever that radius is.
So if you live in Cambria, it's so much better.
It is. But but that would be ideal, cuz i- if we approach it from a different perspective, honestly, we would have to do a meet confer with the unions. Because they're you're gonna have employees that are like, okay, well, keep your twenty-five bucks, partner, you know, I'm gonna go you you know, enjoy my life with the family, so there's there's somewhat of a balance there, but to to what Tristan said, forty-five minute response time. You know, vehicles should probably stay at home, you know, and that can be highlighted in 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 the document. But that shouldn't prevent our employees for a twenty-five dollar stipend to be able to go live their life.
So from four thirty P M., they're off duty. And they're on-call or they're the standby person, I realize it's for eleven days, but there's other people working, I mean. Until what time, let's say from four thirty that day, until what time would they be responsible for handling that call? Till seven A M., okay, so they're getting twenty-five dollars total? For that many hours, okay.
Unless they're activated, then they immediately go.
So not to open a can of worms, but I could swear I read somewhere in IRS rules that you gotta pay them at least minimum wage. You might wanna look at that. I'm not advocating that, where where I'm coming from it is I had no idea that's what you're doing, and I was gonna say. That's an awfully expensive proposition to pay somebody minimum wage, even minimum wage. I don't know who would do it for minimum wage, but from four thirty to seven in the morning, why not pay them? Because that's the minimum minimum wage, you could be paying them their regular wage and have them do work, you know, not.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure there's a loophole there because a lot of fire agencies, anybody that does emergency response, you know, for for years, our fire department has had, if our chief is in training or gone, they have an act uh standby duty officer that can get paid a fifty-dollar stipend. In which our lawyers mean confer with their union, they negotiate that standby pay, and that's what they get paid on standby, so I'm sure there's some. Wherever that exemption is.
It would be helpful to, um if you find that where it is, to send it to.
I think it's somewhere in that pub fifteen, there's a lot more to that. IRS pub fifteen, so that stipend then doesn't count toward hours.
No, and I think that's where we kind of separate that a lot, because when you're actually physically going to do work, you are getting paid.
So you're back on the clock.
Yeah, if that phone rings and we say respond.
So when the phone rings, you're there. Also, it's it's a two-hour. You get your business done in an hour and a half, you're getting paid for two hours. If you get it done in an hour and you get a call back a half hour later, you're not getting another two hours. That's all within that two-hour window of time, so. And now we have our SCADA and our alarms that we can verify and all, you know, invalidate if those two alarms occur within a two-hour period.
About the forty-five minutes, if you live in Paso or Slow, you're gonna take forty-five minutes if you go from your home, if you're out by the airport in either place, living in that area, much less driving from another event to get to your truck.
We're we're hard and fast on the forty-five, if you're if you're that far out, then you 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 need to get closer while you're on-call.
Right, that's what I was trying to figure out here.
And we'll and we'll address it another day, like actual on-call housing or and on-call for those out-of-town operators. I mean, you know, once a year, it's usually in October, I'll knock on wood, not this year, um we get that broken valve or we get that big marine terrorist leak. Where we're here till two A M. and you know, we're turning around and we're we're back at seven A M. the next day, so.
So many hours of rest to the birthday.
Like an airline pilot?
I I offer that to them, um most are excited to get back and, you know, complete the repair or, you know, get the feedback and service, but yeah, I I do offer that.
And so is there one person per department on-call at a time or more?
There is, there's one person on-call for water and wastewater, and we do have dual certified operators that retain water treatment and distribution and a wastewater license, I could. But ninety percent of the time, when we have, I'll give an anecdote, we're speaking uh last week with P G and E. Um at eight thirty-eight at night, uh without any warning, P G and E went down for the whole town. That affected all nine of our lift stations, that affected all four of my booster stations, including our six tank sites and our five well sites. One guy can't go around and fire up generators at nine well site and it uh man, lift stations. You know, four, you know, booster stations, and then visit your your five wellheads to make sure that, you know, everything's okay.
All four engines are gone.
Yeah, yeah, that that's that's why we don't have, and and a lot of agents, you know, not, there's a few, I'm not gonna say a lot. But there's many agencies that do have just one operator that covers water and we saw it around call. Um I think that's a vulnerability for us, so I would definitely suggest to get that. I think when we get down to the crux of all this, the nexus where this is really emergency response. And.
And so is that the only employee that gets to take the vehicle home?
That is, yes.
So nobody else commutes daily? Except if they're.
No one else can be commutes in a district vehicle except for on-call, well, right now we have our superintendents. But that's what we'll discuss today as well.
And I'm assuming that if something is uh beyond that individual employee's ability to correct, you know about it, you know about it.
Usually, if it's a situation that large, and and I've been there, I really did, you're freaking out, yeah, you're calling your superintendent. You're calling the utility director, you're saying, hey, this is going on here, and you know, I just talked to Tristan and Tristan's on his way, but you know, what can I do, yeah, you're you're freaking out a little bit, cuz usually.
Very the lead on that, so the superintendents, which carry some equipment, who are also our management confidential exempt employees who are on salary, they're not hourly, they're on the hook like Jim is when he goes home or I go home and you know what hits the fan, you know, we're we're called back. So so as it stands now, those superintendents who are subject to callback do take those vehicles home. And then and that's what we're, Jim was alluding to.
So they are subject to callback all the time?
Yeah, pretty much, unless otherwise, unless they don't, something's happening at home, they have a baby, or whatever it is.
No, but I mean, so they have district vehicles all the time.
The superintendents do.
How many superintendents do you have?
So so how many vehicles are going home with employees every night? There'd be the two superintendent and then the two people that are on-call, and that's it. So all this.
Not counting the fire chiefs.
Stuff you air out in the community and. Everybody that works at CCSD is driving a uh a district vehicle home to San Miguel every night, that's.
Not for the over half a decade.
However, let me just shoot this out here.
Wait, not for the what?
Uh not not for the over half a decade that I've been here, that might have been the case prior. Situations where there were some administrative personnel probably taking advantage of that.
Anyway, I mean, what 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 sort of sticks out to me is you know, if they're driving, you know, two fifty trucks or one fifty trucks.
They're half tons, yeah.
Okay, so they're they're half-ton trucks, uh is there any way to to minimize that with say, a hybrid vehicle to travel to and from home, uh or?
I would love, um so what we pitched and well, I don't want to detract from this too much.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah, I this is so, this is not granted place for that, but but, you know, so save a lot of money.
Well, what's going on right now is this year, starting this year, municipalities, agencies our size that have our fleet size of vehicles. Um fleet size being like two fifties, one fifties and above. If you buy a new vehicle, fifty percent of the vehicles you buy have to be a Z E V, zero emissions vehicle. PG and we, like I said, we've gone over this in our and I a couple times. PG and E has a program right now, well, they will go from uh the transformer to your switchgear for free. You have to purchase two vehicles in five years. And the charging infrastructure, so you're going from your switchgear to where you're gonna have the devices that charge. That's on the agency, and then, of course, purchasing other devices. Um we've reached out and been in touch with the A P C D who has grants or funding grants. Um I don't know if it's matching, I forget, it's it's been since Christmas since we've heard from.
Me today, as a matter of fact.
Ashley?
Actually, mainly today, so we bounce back and forth about the. She says more grants available, fully funded, covered pretty much all the costs.
Yeah, so we we can get a a fifty grand worth of electrical.
But to tie into your question, start getting around. Once we had that direction in terms of more of a commuting vehicle and we stray away, you know, until we get to this point where we can get you know, the technology comes where we can actually have trucks that are E V and also can carry all our tools and the range, all the all those issues. It sounds like you were talking about just commuter vehicles to to. Well, then we'll step away from the emergency use, it becomes a fringe benefit, it's more of a payment and compensation piece to it.
I I'm just thinking that the that, you know, it the one fifty-sized vehicle.
Like the Ford Lightning, started off a hundred grand, didn't sell, they're down to about forty thousand dollars with rebates and stuff. That's a really good price for a Z E V.
Like, yeah, thirty-nine grand for for one of those, now, uh uh you know, obviously, you still have, if you're gonna, if that's what you're gonna send them home, you obviously have to outfit it like you would any normal one.
There there's some limitations with material that you can carry on there. But you can put your street key in there, so that's your isolation valve for your water, that's extendable, that goes anywhere from three feet to eight feet deep. You can put your curb keys in there so you can shut off houses, you can put enough tools, hand tools for yourself in fittings. Most of our trucks carry quite an array of fittings that we can fix ninety percent of anything onsite right there.
I'm not gonna get into the minutia of this thing because that's operation, that's not where we belong. I just I just, cuz cuz we are talking about commuting vehicles and, you know, we can certainly, I think, save a ton of money on fuel. If we can, if we can resolve, resolve that 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 issue, have have you looked at?
I guess, I guess, I I mean, my one one question I had would be that would be that if if people are living in um places like Templeton and Paso and Moro Bay and wherever, forty-five minutes away, right?
No, that's actually very accurate.
Yeah, and and they have and they have forty-five minutes to get to the district when when there's when there's an emergency. It would seem to me, it would seem to me that um that pretty much any any location to get to in within our little service area, it's five, ten minutes away from any other, from any other. And I'm just not sure that, and I'm thinking more about the amount of fuel driving back and forth and in in the big in the big vehicles there. It would seem to makes sense to me anyway, that the 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 company vehicles, if the company vehicles were left here at the courtyard. You're only adding five minutes, ten minutes onto somebody's response time to drive their own car that they can get paid mileage for, or or, you know, you buy some Nissan Leafs and keep them around the people that are that are going home. And it would seem that you could avoid a lot of wear and tear on the district big vehicles. Without.
Can I give you a scenario, Mr.?
Absolutely, yes.
March tenth, twenty twenty-three, you turn left at Windsor, you can't get anywhere. So if you're the on-call operator and you're in your little nineteen eighty-nine Toyota, you're trying to get there. Eight hours till that road was opened by the C H T.
Yeah, yeah, I was standing out there with.
And why are you, why are you going there to get to? CCSD vehicle.
On the other side of the.
Okay, so.
Makes sense.
No argument, catastrophe, March thirtieth or whatever, twenty twenty-three, how often does that happen?
Well, the hundred-year flood seems to happen. So literally, as soon as that flood pump goes on by the county.
Half the time.
Well, I mean, do you, uh there's the argument with me, do you wanna take the water off of Main Street and just put it somewhere else?
I know.
But that's all that's really doing, so I'm not gonna argue the efficacy of the flood pump there, but I'm just saying.
The pump should work, sure.
It works fantastic, sixteen hundred gallons a minute, it knows water.
I'm glad to hear that it's only, it's no generally, no more than four vehicles doing this commute every day, okay? But we go through trucks in our town like water, okay? Yeah, when I went, when I ran before, a long time ago, every truck had a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it, and I went, how is that even possible? What's our service area? And I don't know exactly, I know we go up to the grade, I think, on forty-six is the it's Cambria zip code, I don't know how far you serve, but it's not much, but if they're going sixty or seventy or eighty miles a day back and forth to Cambria, well, that's gonna pile up, it's gonna pile up.
When did you run?
Two thousand eight.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just say, things are different now.
Sure, but the but the thing that I think.
Sure.
Couple of us, okay, is you can always have a scenario where what you have is. you can always have a scenario where what you have isn't good enough. You could have the F one fifty and you need the two fifty. Or you need the four wheel drive and you have a two wheel drive, even though it's a CCSD vehicle. Okay, so you try to do what makes sense, you know, in virtually every situation to me, okay? As an example, could that, could we have some Maverick hybrid trucks? Okay, forget the EVs. That's a lot of infrastructure. I mean, not forget them, but you know, that's down the road. But Maverick hybrid pickup trucks or a one fifty? I don't know what you're carrying all of them. Most of the F one fifties I see CCSD ones are standard pickup truck.
Right.
Which is another issue further down in here. A standard pickup truck is not a specialty non-purpose water repair utility vehicle. Tells you in the IRS publication, standard pickup truck is not. Got to have a lift gate, got to have a, a body with the pie boxes.
All that stuff has to be done.
A utility bed.
A utility bed. So we have, I'm not sure what you guys drive. I know I do a lot of travel on the forty-six. Yeah, well, so now good, but if that goes home every day, seven days a week, that is eating up not only the fossil fuel.
So I'll, I'll let you talk about it, but you know, the, and Jim would be able to talk about it more, but the, the cost of delayed response, you know, so, so what, what are our costs of, of delayed response?
Why is it delayed except if Main Street is closed? You come here to get the truck.
That, that's the delay. So if they come with the truck, they go straight to the emergency versus going to the plant, opening up a lock gate.
Correct.
Opening up the, uh, actual building to go get the secured keys. Because if anybody remembers, we had a vehicle stolen that went up to Hearst Castle and caused quite a bit of damage. So now we're secure.
We're going to, which will be in court on Tuesday.
Well, you could get the on-call guy the keys.
I'll give you another scenario. It's a hundred year flood that happens once a year. It happens. The PG&E power thing happens often. So you're in your personal vehicle, you're trying to get into the water, the wastewater plant to get your district vehicle and the gate clicker doesn't work because the PG&E power doesn't work.
So how do you get in it with that truck? Or you're saying you don't have?
Now you gotta get out manually.
Yeah, now you gotta get out or you go, now you can't get in there. Now you gotta go to the manual gate, get your keys, unlock the gate, physically open. It's just, it's just adding to response time. And if you remember that little accident we had here at Main Street here uh, in January, that was over a hundred gallons a minute. Every minute counts. We almost drained a million gallons.
So, so I don't know what that costs. Like Jim would know, like what, what is that? Yeah. So in dollars, what would that emergency cost us? Per, you know, for, for a ten minute delay or twenty minute delay when we talk about water, you know.
The road repair there was fifty thousand dollars alone and that was due to water damage. So the longer the, the flow, the more damage.
And for wastewater, you pay for every gallon you spill.
Well, of course, but it's forty five minutes from the get-go. Because
Well, that's max.
Not going to get here faster.
So what are, what are our, our most frequent on-call operators? Cause it's right now they, they can volunteer for it.
Well, it's awarded. It's in their position description. So fortunately we have enough, we have, we have an extra body where, you know, not everybody has.
Has to do it.
Yeah.
Aren't there some people that volunteer for it? Cause they, they like the money?
Yes.
And do we have some of those people that live closer than Paso and Santa Margarita? I mean, we have someone in Moro Bay, right?
Uh, yes, yeah, we have wastewater has one in Moro Bay. And then, yeah, we have a, a local guy who lives, several local guys and one of them's on call. Yeah, and he lives here in town.
There's a lot, a lot of considerations to be made here, you know, you, you know, there's, there's a lot going on here. One thing I would recommend is to see if there's any small districts so far that have already implemented electric trucks and how's that working for them? Try to find out, try to find out, you know, if, if that's happening somewhere, what, what the actual cost is to outfit a, you know, a one fifty Lightning or, or the GM Silverado, which is coming out, which actually is I think better truck because it, it'll do truck or paint trends.
I, I'm going to interrupt.
Sure. But anyway, we're getting way up.
Okay, this is not, no, this is all good.
Well, but we're way up.
Yeah. So, um, um, and I, and I think the discussion is really excellent, um, but
We're all.
Yeah, we're, yeah. So let's do, let's go as quickly as possible through three and then we'll go on to our next agenda.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll continue on then. Let's see, B. So here we get to the taxable part. Uh, the personal use of a CCSD vehicle is a taxable fringe benefit subject to income and employment taxes. Personal use includes commuting to and from work. The value of the fringe benefit must be included in the employee's wages or reimbursed by the employee to the CCSD. The CCA, CCSD has determined that is in the CCSDs and employee's best interest to use a commuting rule to determine the value provided to the employees. Under this rule, the value of commuting costs of the vehicle is provided to the employees determined by multiplying each one-way commute, that is from home to work and work to home by one fifty, dollar fifty. If more than one employee commutes in the vehicle, this value applies to each employee. A control employee cannot use the commuting rule. Control employees for government employers are either elected officials or an employee whose compensation equals or exceeds the amount for a federal government executive level five. These employees, the annual lease value, if the employee has provided a vehicle for thirty or more days of continuous use or daily lease value, if the employee has provided a vehicle for less than thirty days of continuing, continuous use. Methodology said should be used. So here it kind of clearly states.
Yeah, that's pretty all spelled out. I'm sure.
But we don't use that, of course, I understand.
We, we've never used it as long as I've been here. Haley, have you ever seen that employed?
No, I mean, we, we don't pay anybody my amount.
No, no. Just lost it here. There's a reference to us, an amount, oh, here it is. Whose compensation equals or exceeds the amount for a federal government executive level five. Might be nice to actually put an amount in there.
Sure.
Or, or, or some other references to where we can go look that up.
If, if that might change with, uh,
I could say currently, yeah.
So that's, yeah. So the rest of it is pretty much straightforward.
I went, I went and tried to find something.
Anything else?
I think you got enough to, you know, to go ahead and edit this thing out the way you like.
How about C?
Okay, yeah, we, we've got just a couple more. But C is just use of qualified non-personal use vehicles is considered a working condition benefit and it's not taxable to the employee in any circumstances. CCSDs vehicles are to be considered to be qualified non-personal use vehicles and they include any clearly marked fire vehicles, any vehicles designed to cargo with a load of gross over fifteen thousand, fourteen thousand pounds rather, sorry. Uh, tractors and other special purpose farm vehicles. And then we kind of put in there, vehicles provided for on-call operators, so.
No, that's okay.
The four vehicles that go home every day are those big bad trucks?
No, they're, they're the one fifties that are outfitted. Well, no, that, I'm sorry, that water is, yeah, you're, you're correct. Absolutely. Yeah, wastewater kind of trades off the vehicle for Yeah, certain operator take their vehicle.
Certain operators like certain vehicles on the wastewater side, so let's take it. One of them, one of them that's been taken on before is train truck. Other times it's the F one fifty with the eighty-five gallon diesel fuel tank in the back. Which still has all the required tools.
I can, I can, I can barely see anything. But all this, all this, you know, because we're, we're talking about people using CCSD vehicles beyond just their job here.
So are we done with D?
I, I have a quickie question on that. So vehicles provided for the on-call, do those, that, that's not the on-callness isn't specified in the, in the IRS publication. I was trying to find out. The other three are clear. What I'm thinking, is it the case that because the trucks or whatever they're driving have, they do qualify because, not because they're on-call, but because they have extra equipment or tools. Got it. Okay.
Yeah, and it goes into a little bit on page of left, but.
Yeah, I have to try to get some understanding there.
Sorry. It's the, it's the IRS publication.
Yeah.
Agenda packet page.
Right.
Eleven, maybe? Yes. And so there's different definitions for, uh, if we go to, uh, so page eleven, top right, about a third of the way down, it talks about, um, des- definition of a, um, specialized utility repair truck. And we, we looked that up and it talks specifically about water, wastewater.
Ah, okay.
And that's a separate document that I, I gave Director Scott, it does look like, but so anyways, in that policy piece, we probably could cite that, um, regulation and point to it.
And, and just so you understand where I'm coming from, the thing I keep coming back to is pickup trucks are special. Pickup truck, just as a pickup truck, which some I would swear it's what I see on forty-six going back and forth. I'm on the forty-six a lot. Is a regular pickup truck. And that is, that does not fit qualified non-personal vehicle, used vehicle.
That'd be the superintendent. The superintendent wants fifties, the half tons.
So a half ton one fifty is, does not fit the, uh, special use, whatever. Unless it has hydraulic liftgate, permanent tanks or drums, permanent sideboards or panels that materially raise the bed. To me, that was that big thing.
Yeah.
Weller or crane or, you know, they're, they're not. You know, the guy that comes around and reads my meter, he's in a regular pickup. That's not that doesn't qualify for this treatment. So, and I don't, I understand what, I don't, but what operators do. But I don't know what the superintendents would do on call. If it's just managerial stuff, I would say, why are they driving a utility bed truck? If it's not, well, then that's why you're driving.
So that's something that you might address.
Well, that's kind of why they got added in, right?
Yes. Yes.
Well, it is as long as they're driving a qualifying vehicle. That's, and the CCSD doesn't make the determination of what's a qualifying vehicle. The IRS does.
Well, but this says on-call operators, this doesn't say the superintendents.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah. So the superintendents is really different.
Well, but it's treated, it is, but it isn't because I think, you haven't said this directly. I think it's treated as a working condition benefit for the superintendents too, right? You're not getting it reported as income.
Absolutely.
You're getting it reported as a working condition benefit. And for it to be that, it has to be a qualifying vehicle.
Right. So you will address it, right?
Absolutely. Well, that's why we're here.
That's right. Okay. So when you bring it back to us, you can figure that one out, right?
Let's do.
Okay. Okay, are we on D or on, we are, we on E?
Yeah, we can cruise over to here. The value of personal use of CCSD owned vehicles will be included in an employee's biweekly pay if the commuting rule is to be used to arrive at the value. If the annual lease value or daily lease value method is being used for valuation purposes, the value of personal use of CCSD owned vehicles will be included in the employee's second biweekly pay in each month for the previous month.
Sounds.
So that's, that is not happening right now or it is?
It is not.
Okay, so you're going to add that in for the future.
And then here's where we did some red lines for E. Um, in cases where a department manager uses a CCSD owned vehicle for personal use, approval from the general manager is required. I don't know why a department manager would need a CCSD vehicle for personal use. I don't, I, again, I don't, I don't know if that even needs to be in there anymore. It seems.
The only thing I can think of is that if for whatever reason you were going to a conference, your car was broken down.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
And you're about to go to a conference and you're like, hey, you know, Matt, I, I gotta go get groceries or, you know.
But that's not really personal use. Going to a conference.
No, 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 I'm saying like, uh, he was on his way to San Francisco, his car was, was damaged and so he was using it for more than de minimis use.
Oh, yeah.
He would never do that.
You know, but there's, you know, there's always something that, you know, could come up.
So that's why it says that the general manager.
That's why, if you guys want to leave that in and if you're comfortable with it, the fair to you.
I mean, it's very prescriptive to, to not, oh, I could, there's always something.
Yeah.
I, I can't even really think of what, but I can see something coming up or like, hey, I've got to.
And if you do it all the time and we find out then.
I gotta go to the dentist on the way to work, on the way to a conference. It's the only time I can get into the chiropractor. I don't know, but.
Medical appointments are hard to get. Went to the dentist today and it took me six months to get in.
Okay, so are we on F?
We're on.
So we, we like it, what's there?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
Um, all right. Yeah, finally, um, F for finally.
Yes.
If an employee is eligible to use the commuting rule to arrive at the value of personal use and they elect to reimburse the CCSD for all of the personal use rather than have it added to their wages, reimbursement must be submitted with their biweekly timesheet.
Okay.
Yes, that's just as straightforward as.
All right.
So we got some work to do to clarify on this.
And it'll be, we'll put it down. I don't think you'll have it done by our next meeting.
Oh, yeah.
On the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Wait, thank you so much.
Absolutely, guys. Yeah, thanks for.
Without you guys, so.
Well, I'm, I'm glad this has been a hot topic for a long time. You know, usually when everything else gets calm and mellow, there's something's got to
Yeah.
Come back up. But yeah, no, this is something that would need to retooling for a long time and this, my kind of parting thoughts here is, um, again, it's, it's the emergency issue. So I think the on-call operator is, is, is a necessity.
Yeah.
We, we know every, all of our infrastructure in this, this country is fifty to a hundred years old. That's a big piece.
Yeah.
I, I would feel comfortable giving up the superintendent privilege. It is a privilege. It's something attractive that was given to me when I was hired. But at this point in time, I think, um, it's something that we could probably abandon just for.
Or move to Cambria?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Final questions, guys, or anything? Okay. Thanks for your time. I appreciate it all.
I just turned it on.
I, I just want to personally thank you, uh, Mr. De Vega. Um, for being here, um, and when it comes back, we hope you listen back. So we don't need to do any vote or anything on this.
No, we've already.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll bring it back to you in a second.
No, there's no motion to be made.
Is there any public comment on this agenda item other than what we've already?
What we've already said.
Nope. Okay. Let's go to four B then, review, discussion and consideration of draft CSD policy ten forty-five legal counsel and auditor. And, um, Mr. Carmel, um, has made the changes that are here. And, um, I, it's, it's open for discussion so that, um,
Well, you've had, you've had legal counsel look, look this over.
Yes, that's the one, he's the one who made it.
So.
Who made the changes.
You know.
Thank you.
I guess, I guess my comment on this is that this is something for the board to now carefully uh, read and, and understand because this is, he's sort of he's sort of written his own parameters here and, and.
But he actually wrote what actually happens.
Right.
Yeah.
So I don't know how much we have to say other than you guys in the board need to take a good close look at this to make sure that this.
Well, it's on a February agenda.
Well, for the board.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there, is there input from us that we need to?
And we, it depends.
Yeah.
I am.
You do have comment?
Yes.
Good. Oh, absolutely. I think it is.
You have a comment?
Yes.
Okay, well, let's hear. Oh, definitely.
That's what he's written here. Fine. I don't disagree with the. Ted thing. But the detail of his requirements. For the public is very clean.
Yeah, tell me it's specifically what you're talking about.
Over page, after the red. The legal council shall present and report on all legal issues and closed session items before the board.
Oh.
But they do that wonderfully, but they don't say anything that's going on. It's the worst report I've ever seen. It says, yep, no, nothing was done. That's not acceptable.
No, he said, no, he says no decisions were, yeah, yeah. Right.
That's not an acceptable report. That's the minimum report. That's my.
Well, it's what it's legally.
That's my point. I'm in a policy. Now I want to hear more. The public wants to hear more of what's going on about what we're discussing in closed doors. Right. And then it says right here, he didn't have to say anything. That was my.
No, that's.
That's not what it says. He has to report on the items.
Yeah, nothing happens.
If nothing happens, then he reflects enough. No.
No, it doesn't.
It here.
You guys have been in these board meetings and behind closed doors. I haven't had that wonderful opportunity of not knowing what's going on and not telling anybody anything.
Okay.
Until it's already done and then you say, oh, we discussed that two months ago.
No. Or you need to be very specific because what you're saying is is, in my opinion. My humble opinion is not correct. So you need to give me a specific example about what ha- like where that happened.
I don't know where it happens because I don't know what's discussed behind closed doors.
Well, then how can you say what you're saying?
Then here's the problem. It because your objection to the closed session is the fact that it's a closed session.
Right.
I mean, otherwise. So and there are reasons why there are closed sessions, but what I'm hearing from you is that you don't like closed sessions.
Right. For examples, you have these lawsuits. We don't know anything about them. We have permitting going on. We don't know anything about till we hit the fan and. There's a lot of things going on that should be aware of the public's standpoint. That's my.
Well, but but there is the other, there's the other side of it. In a, in a, in the case of litigation, if the. If the district is planning a move, a strategic move, they don't necessarily want to let the opponent.
You used that argument before.
Well, okay, I'd like. I'd like to hear your.
See, he's already gone through this.
Those sessions are about.
I know. That's my point.
Okay.
Well, but but yeah, but the bottom line is this, decisions are not made. In those closed sessions because if they were. They would have to be made in public.
Yes.
Right. That's why you bring them out. We don't know what's been happening for six months behind closed doors.
In what situation? In what situation?
The lawsuit up at the school is a big one.
There's no lawsuit.
That's what I'm trying to tell you. I don't know there's not a law.
Well, I'm telling you, there's no lawsuit.
That's what everybody says. I don't know what goes on behind.
Lie to you about that?
I didn't say that. I'm saying if you want to know the acreage, you want to know the possible land and.
Yeah.
And you hear both parties saying, well, we're gonna buy this out and we're gonna sue this. I don't know anything.
Who who said that?
The rumors, Neil.
And there you go.
Thank you.
You need to be real.
Big rumor mill is Tim because he doesn't say what's going on.
Well, his, he says everything that he can say without jeopardizing the welfare of.
I'm just saying, my policy would be preference to have more information.
Have no closed session.
No, have more topics of what's covered.
Okay, what I want you to do. Because I I think this is really important.
Well, it is.
Yeah, so I want you to send me wording. You want to give that to me and send me wording? And we'll take a look at it. Yeah, send me wording in a in a email and then we'll take a look at it. Okay?
That's that's fine.
Okay, good. So it's not ready to go to the.
No, not if not.
No, yeah, there's, yeah, there's, there's. Uh, more understanding that needs to be made, then then let's let's spell it out and and.
So so write write it and send it to me before the next meeting.
I didn't, I wrote some notes here, but you didn't agree with what I was gonna change, so.
Well.
My topics of all. Discussionary information should be presented. And I don't know what's discretionary and what isn't.
But I think it is.
It could must be everything.
Bottom line is if. Okay, okay, you're gonna send me what you think needs to be written in there and we'll put it on the next agenda.
Sounds good.
Okay. I don't think we need to, let's see.
Anything else almost, actually, other than.
It's a consideration, but it's gonna just be. It's been a table, yes. Okay, um, and now. We are at the review, discussion and consideration of CCSD twenty twenty-four, twenty-five summary of management objectives. And just let me say prior to your discussing this because it would be great, uh, Mr. McAlhany, if you could do that. But um. This um, this document is gonna be, is gonna be able to be fleshed out once we do strategic planning.
Yeah.
And that's why it became very short. So do you wanna, what what would you like to say about?
No, no, yeah, I appreciate it. Um, uh, Director Scott, Vice President Scott. Chairperson Scott. Sent me the the version of this document with.
Yeah.
Okay, and um, it was very, it was tailored to. It was tailored to their uh mission for their general manager, tied into, you know, various different projects, something they wanted to get done, the strategic plan. And so. When I went in there and basically plagiarized the thing, you know, and tweaked a lot, changed names and changed some wording. Um, I really pulled out a lot of the things that were in there because it just didn't apply to the district. And it would really be a board document, in my opinion, because this isn't, this isn't really. A policy about the role. This seems more like these are your goals and objectives for this fiscal year. Or in in for the next five years, what whatever that is. And our strategic plan kind of guides those. Goals for the general manager. So it really seems to be like a a strategic plan. For the general manager to accomplish this strategic strategic plan goals. So I really trimmed it up quite a bit for for you folks to look at it and chew on and see how. How it really um fits into the mission of CCSD. You know, obviously, we have my position description and my role pretty well outlined. So this document felt more like a a guiding document. On how or or the specifically what you would like me to see achieved in this timeframe, in this timeframe. The previous document for Los Osos was like, within the first six months, do this. Within the first year, do that. And so it was very prescriptive.
Yeah.
And we just recently shifted from reviewing our strategic strategic goals and progress from every month to, is it three or six?
And it's quarterly.
It's quarterly. So we moved it to quarterly. And even that's really difficult when you take a look about. The sheer mass and scope of some of the projects that were being asked to do SST, WRF permitting, Stewart Street tanks. That I was a little nervous about prescribing timeframes to specific projects uh in that document that I saw in the Los Osos version. Because of how the goalpost can move on us.
But you do report those updates out in your GM letter. That's right, too. That's right.
But so.
But but that's that's exactly what has been the issue that seems to have plagued the organization for certainly as long as I've been in in. In paying attention to it anyway, wouldn't say involved. And that is, there is never. A timeframe attached to anything. It's like, it's like stuff doesn't get done and it doesn't get done and it doesn't get done and it just continues. To not get done. I'm not, I'm looking at you, but I'm not pointing a finger. I'm just, I'm just pointing out that there are, there are, there are. Things that were supposed to get done ten years ago that haven't gotten done. There were things that were supposed to get done last year that haven't gotten done. And there's no. Accountability. Uh, uh, certainly by the board. By the board and the board is the is the one who would be the one to hold the staff accountable and the board certainly doesn't do it. For a a failure to accomplish. Any of the strategic planning goals other than, you know, review the strategic plan within within any sort of a reasonable timeframe.
Have you seen the, have you seen the latest document?
The latest strategic planning document?
Yeah, it's been changed.
Probably not.
Which will be helpful for you, but but your but your point is well taken.
So. I I mean, I think. Uh, from from my perspective, anyway, my limited perspective. The diff could do with less strategic planning, less management objectivizing and more getting shit done.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what I.
No, that's fair.
You don't need to be spending time in meetings and having retreats to grow with strategic plans and stuff because you've done. You you the agency has done a number of strategic plans since since I've been paying attention. And nothing. Has gotten done.
Now, I'll argue because I'm just gonna play devil's advocate that our Vice President. And Director Thomas had an ad hoc committee to specifically look at what we've done and haven't done. And we've developed a document that shows, okay, this is what's been completed off.
Because. What he says.
Yeah.
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 In response to.
Yeah, he's looking for it. No pressure, but we specifically highlighted the things that were completed in the strategic plan from whatever various strategic plans over the years. So. Some things have gotten done. I think we saw, there's also been a change in staff to where. You know, we're we're moving a little quicker on some of these things and 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 we update that. I'm not, I'm not saying that it it's not appropriate to put a target goal on here. Sometimes those target goals aren't realistic in terms of the script of the project.
But what but when when there is, when when there is something that has a a timeframe, a a a a a time for something to be completed. And. And it doesn't get done, it doesn't get done. That's an opportunity to explain. Or revisit the project and find out exactly why.
Yep.
And then we do that. And we do that in the strategic plan review where we say, okay, this is what's happening here and the utilities manager will report out and say, okay. This 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 regulatory agency wants this, which delayed this piece. That's that's the part where I empathize with our utilities manager that's dealing with other regulatory bodies. Government is slow sometimes.
Oh, it's slow all the time.
So I mean, when we're. But we're, but we're hamstrung. For instance, I'll give you an example. Our project description is very. Close, very close to finishing its final draft to then bring it before the board to have.
But 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 but. I guess, I guess this is, this is kind of, this is kind of my point, my point. Uh, of of completing another project description, which would be the third, fourth, third. There was the original one in twenty fourteen.
Yeah.
There was the one twenty seventeen in SCIR when they decided to use the. WRF to support build out. It wasn't WRF, then it was. Yeah, something was, something like that. And now, and now we're working on our third project description, right?
Yeah.
The task, the task is to complete a permit application.
Right.
Or that thing that they built ten years ago out on out on Sam Simeon Creek Road there. So so saying that that that. We've written another project description and calling that an accomplishment.
That's huge accomplishment.
It it it's 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 really, it's really unfortunate that ten years down the road. Writing something that may assist in applying for a permit that should have been done. Eight years ago.
No, a hundred percent.
I mean, it's hard to, it's hard to, it's hard to to to. To call that an accomplishment. You know, I would say, I would say, I would say that 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 submitting a completed permit application. Complete, not one that's half done and will get back ten pages of things they need there. That would qualify as an accomplishment because once once CCSD has done that, then the ball is in the county's court, the ball is in. The coastal conservancy's court, it's in, it's in other people's court, right?
Right.
That might, that might qualify as an as an accomplishment.
Yeah.
But just writing another project description when we've done those over and over and over again.
But we've wrote them.
And saying, and saying, we've made another accomplishment here.
But we've wrote them, the versions, written, excuse me, written them. Knowing. That when it gets to county and the coastal commission, it would be all for nothing.
Yeah.
Zero, zero progress, denied, stamped, appealed. You didn't do any mitigation for Esha. You haven't done this. You haven't done that. And so that's the problem is that. And granted, you are right. It's been nine years of travesty of just not doing the right thing. However, I take it as accomplishment that we're saying, okay, we know what we have to do. We've talked to the coastal commission, we talked to county, we know what we have to do as far as mitigation. Nine years. Excuse my language. We've been sticking our middle finger up to the coastal commission and saying, no, we're not. We're not gonna mitigate. We're not gonna mitigate anything.
Correct.
So now we're saying, okay, you're right. We were wrong. We're gonna mitigate it.
Listen, listen, this.
Wait, wait, I think Gordon was next.
Yeah.
Yeah, just real quick. Yeah, yeah.
So I'm still on the same subject here with what it is.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna, yeah, we're not gonna go, I mean, wait, wait, wait.
What they're talking about is right here.
Wait.
He's already met that.
But he hasn't. But he hasn't finished what he's saying and then it's.
Description, we can submit it to the county and we and that. It will, the application will be submitted and and we've done that to ourselves. But uh, when we do submit it to get the permit. Then then that's where the change, that's where the unknown comes in.
Sure.
What from there, the uh, i- if that's the goal to get it submitted, we're very close. If that was a strategic goal to get it submitted, it's gonna be submitted. That's an accomplishment for me personally. For you, for the rest of the community, it's like, it's taking forever.
And and that's why I suggested that submitting a completed permit application.
Would be.
Getting it out of out of our hands and into somebody else's hands. That that would qualify.
That is.
Okay, wait. Gordon has been waiting so.
No, everything.
I turn that.
Okay.
Well, I'm talking about on this program, it's got it written right here, this before sustaining committees above it.
Yeah.
The proposed management objectives help to publicly explain how the general manager intends to perform the statutory responsibilities and accomplish the priorities established by the board.
Right.
That's what you're supposed to do. So therefore, if you accomplish that by. Detailing these things more publicly, you've done well. I'm not disagreeing with that. Because you're fighting that uphill battle.
Yeah.
But it's in here that you should be doing that. And that's what I'm agreeing with.
No, yeah.
Sometimes it's not publicly until you came on board, let's say.
Yes.
Bringing forth, something like closed doors.
Yeah.
Right, that's right.
Right. So you're you're claiming right. And I can see Jim's point because we've lived through it too.
Yeah.
No, no, yeah.
You have, see.
Yeah, and I think those objectives are are good.
So that was a good comment, is what I'm saying.
No, absolutely.
Thank you. Go ahead, Don.
My turn. Yeah, okay. Actually, I think the very minor, I like this for, it isn't specific because we're waiting for the plan. But as a general description of how the relationship between the general manager and the board and the public, I think is excellent. And with very little tweaking could be done in its present form.
Yeah.
Even though there's no strategic plan yet, because what it does describe is the relationship.
Right.
Between how how the board is going to, how it communicates its desires.
Right.
And how the management communicates that. I think it's excellent. And I think you did a really good job. And I think it would be worthwhile looking at it. Generalizing it sufficiently so that it could go out as a more general. This is how the planning and this is how we work. This is how we're working.
Yeah, a guy, a guiding document, you know.
That's what I like. And it's guidance to the board.
Yes.
Guidance to you or your successor.
Yeah, and it also points something out like, here, here are, here are our goals for the board, you know, what the board understands. And that was my only caveat. It's just that when the board takes this and and puts out our goals for you for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, or sixty-seven, and you know, these was what we like to see get done. Um, I just know what I've seen with my colleagues is like they get to county and it's like ramming their head against the wall, trying to break through the red tape. So sometimes when dates are on there, you know, you can't always meet those dates, but like, like Gordon's saying, I can explain that of why, you know, it won't. For the most part, I I won't be able to fool anybody by giving them some confirmation abuse.
Well, and you can have a date as to when you're gonna submit it to the county.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna say something. Um, because we have ten minutes. So I want to bring this back after the strategic planning.
Yes.
So that would be in March, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna bring it back in March.
Yes.
And at that point, we're gonna get real specific with what we believe needs to be done.
Yes.
Okay.
This is a minor update to strategic plan, but then it'll kind of frame the next year until twenty twenty-five where you have your meeting.
Yeah, so continue to March. Right?
Yeah.
And then I'm going to continue four D to March two.
Four, which is D, which is the uh.
Four D, which is the.
That's the.
The last one.
Oh, yeah.
That's the legislative legislative, because I think that needs some really good work.
That's gonna take a while, I see.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Can I put a bug in everybody's ear about that one?
Sure.
Okay. I actually, at first, was wondering if this was something that we should consider until I read, you know, uh, about things that impact our city taking. And certainly, climate change is one of them. If Swet's Glacier lets go down in Antarctica.
Yeah.
You won't have a waste treatment plant, because it'll be underwater, okay?
Well, you should suggest that can add it as an advocacy priority.
Right.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, is that advocacy priority, go ahead.
And the other one is this wind farm.
Yeah.
That's why I'm saying, everybody needs to get familiarized with this thing, because it will destroy sea life.
Yeah.
Absolutely destroy it. And and people come to Cambria, they come to Cambria as tourists because they love our biodiversity.
Yes.
And we come here to go fishing.
But.
So.
I'm saying, these are, these are matters where this might come into.
Well, and, yeah, I think, yeah, I will talk about it next time, but um, I think the priorities are set by the board. So, so that doesn't mean we can't look at the policy, and then the board goes forward to setting their priorities.
Yeah, at first I thought, well, this, yeah, at first I thought.
No, I think it's, I think we need it, yeah.
Now, looking at these things, I'm thinking, it might make sense.
Yeah, so four E is just, was just for your, um.
Yeah.
For your information, and unless you wanna bring it back, we don't need to bring it back.
Let it.
Is that okay?
Yes.
That four E was discussion of examples of private messages sent to the CTC staff on social media platforms.
Right, and it makes, it makes, all of it makes sense, so, thank you, Bailey.
I'm gonna give.
This is my document, I was talking about this for so long.
Yes, so, a- and just let me say, in response, it, the goal is not to give the coastal commissioner or the county or whatever, the county, it's, the goal is not to give them a permit, the goal is for to get it fully permitted. So the steps to get there, it's very well documented in this new document that we've done. Okay, and the dates when we had, when when we initially initially put that on as a as a part of the strategic plan, when it was revised, when, when parts of it were met, the interim steps were met, so I think this document is gonna be, we'll, we'll send it to you. It was, yeah.
It's on the website.
Will you, will you send it, we sent it to the policy committee?
We'll send it to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, there's some little incremental wins in there, you know, but obviously, there's some larger projects that.
Well, and 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 the end result is, we need to get it fully permitted, period. Now.
So just submitting it, the application is the point.
No, because.
Exactly what it done.
You gotta throw it back at us.
Right.
CCSD does not have control over when it gets fully permitted, but CCSD does have control over when a submitted application gets.
Yeah.
But getting it fully permitted is the goal. We can, we can, we don't do anything to make that happen. We have all these interim things that we do, but a measurable thing is to have it fully permitted. Okay, so um, because it is four fifty five, um, I would like um, the general manager to just make, and this is gonna be, I, I can't, yeah. There was a discussion that happened, and I'm doing this under a public comment.
Okay.
Um, there was a discussion at the finance committee about incorporation, and there's all kinds of rumors out there. So, um, Mr. McAlhany, um, uh, said to me that he was going to, I guess, put out, anyway, I'm asking him to address it in three sentences.
Three sentences.
Just tell me what you're gonna do.
I was gonna make a general Starbucks comment, but. Yeah, uh, so I'm gonna send out an update to the community to hopefully dispel some of that. So what happened at the finance committee meeting is that there was an ad hoc meeting about revenue enhancement. That was it. That was their mission, that was their.
It wasn't incorporation.
And so they looked at several different ways to raise revenue, whether it was assessments and benefits and, you know, those different things, looking at the budget, and then incorporation was one of those things that they looked at. And we did, we have some documents from a similar study that was done in oh five. One of the ad hoc committee members started doing some more work, did some research at LAPCO, and presented a report about incorporation, pros and cons. That turned into some next door posts and some other posts that said the CCSD, meaning us as a board, as staff, are looking at to, that we want to incorporate.
Yeah.
It is merely just an investigation piece of a larger assignment that was revenue enhancement.
Yeah.
So I. It was just, it was curious that um, that the 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 LAPCO report sort of came out of nowhere. And then, like, a couple days later, it was this, oh, by the way, you know, the the finance committee is is suggesting that we consider incorporating.
Yeah.
Right about the same time that San Simeon is, is is going lug 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 down for the third time uh, in a, in a situation when uh, current officer of the board has had a long history of advocating that uh, we get together with San Simeon and build a big sewage treatment plant and use their ocean alcohol and and all this sort of stuff there. It's like.
Not gonna help.
There was a confluence of unusual events that all happened at the same time that would lead someone who might be inclined to look at things from a conspiratorial standpoint.
Yes, yeah.
Then that's exactly what's happening. I mean, interesting enough, the LAPCO thing, what made it strange to me was that they start off by saying that this is required by law, this is get done every five years. And the last one was done twenty years ago.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
So why now?
Well, that was my question.
So new. Why now, when two days later, we get this note from the finance committee saying, yeah, let's pursue incorporation?
Recommend.
It's, it's not gonna happen, there's no way this community.
Absolutely telling them wrong.
Okay, 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 yes. Can we do ten more minutes?
Oh, nice.
Is it okay?
Let's get them on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, see, there's a misunderstanding. And A, it was not uh, on the finance committee's agenda. I I got the same notice, and I went and I looked at the finance committee's agenda and looked at what was happening. It was not on the agenda for discussion. It was a preliminary draft report that was given by a specific subcommittee. The finance committee took no action on it.
Oh.
They took no action. All they did was receive the report, and it's not even a complete report. They they were just, it was more of a progress report in their work. It was Dave, uh, Dave Pearson and two others.
Except they're gonna take it to the board.
No, no, see, that's.
In the, in the report.
No, it does not say that. I watched the meeting and.
Well, I didn't watch the meeting.
Well, you need to watch the meeting, because what's happening is, there's, there's, the rumors get out there, you know, and it's just, and it gets expanded more and more. But when you actually look at it, now, it is true, it's a matter of concern.
Yeah.
But nobody on the finance committee is trying to shoehorn this thing in. It was a, it was, as 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 Matt said, it was, it was an ad hoc subcommittee whose job was looking for revenue enhancements and incorporation, that is, in other words, to access sales tax and do certain other things, is a legitimate part of that study. And then they were listing the pros and cons. They didn't even, uh, and Dave Pearson gave the report, he didn't advocate anything. He was just saying, this is what is happening. And uh, the board president, Tom Gray, did not advocate anything. He said, thank you for the report, we are not going to discuss it now. And we're looking forward to the final report, which we will discuss. So everyone's getting their knickers all in a twist. At this, a little early. There won't be a time to get your twisted knickers.
That's right.
But let's save it until it actually happens, because no one has actually officially come out. The only person I have heard who has any connection to the board, who has been advocating strongly for incorporation, is Jim Barren.
Yes, and he ran on that.
And he ran on that and lost, and lost that big time. So it is absolutely imperative that this gets straightened out.
Yeah.
Because, you know, it's, it's torches and pitchforks until, until people, it is.
I, believe me, I was getting, let's just say, I was getting messages from the end of that meeting, all the way until today, about how I could clarify this, and so I I have weekly meetings with the board president.
And that's what I told them, too.
I had a very lengthy meeting, weekly meeting with the president, and he's all aboard, so I just have to draft it tonight, make sure it's nice, clear, concise.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Um, to, to Jim's point, you know, I think it's just a a big coincidence, because the 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 LAPCO piece of it, they've just been behind. So when LAP, LAPCO contacted me, I think it was only four months into the job, it was like, hey, you know, I hate to dump on you, but you know, we're, we're way behind on our MSRs, and we're trying to get caught up. Uh, healthcare district is in the middle of theirs right now, so San Simeon, Los Osos, I think, is is in the, is in the chute, so all of these special districts in the area. Avalo was on that agenda as well.
Okay.
So it isn't just Cambria that just, they said, hey, guess what, you know, they're falling apart. You know, just that it just happened to pop, you know, um.
Yeah.
But in that ad hoc committee's defense, if we look at the MSR report, our revenue, our expenditures are exceeding our revenues.
Yeah.
Which is why the the Lisa Seidel and Pearson were on that ad hoc committee was to look at revenue enhancements. And so incorporation being one of them.
And all I'm going to add is that I hope that on that ad hoc study, they consider things like reducing our electrical costs by tearing off this roof and covering it with solar panels, or putting solar panels up to reduce, what do you pay a month for electricity? What's a hundred twenty thousand bucks? What is to me?
No, it's fifty thousand a month.
Well, still.
But what I'm telling you is, we can't, I just.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, there are other ways to work revenue.
All cleared up, but it was strictly an assignment by the ad hoc committee. You know, the board uh, did not did not direct them to look at incorporation. It hasn't been, obviously, hasn't been discussed at the board level, although there's, there was one meeting, it was like a couple months ago, where it just got mentioned, and there's four board members that heads, you know.
Yeah.
You know. Yeah. So again, it's something, I've, I've had conversations with Robert Fitzroy about the incorporation, very candid conversations. It is a very uphill battle. Well, this looks very bleak. The last city to incorporate was twenty twelve, and it was a sea of hundred, a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
There's one right now, it's going to be, that's sixty thousand.
Yeah.
And we are sixth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're.
Okay, so, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, all right, thank you, yeah, now, if you do that, you will.
I'm so sorry we're doing this, so um, the next thing I wanna do is, so four D is continued.
Four D.
I don't think we need to vote to.
No, no, you can just do it as a.
Okay, and then four E, we're done, because you got that information, and then we have several future agenda items. Is there anything more from you all? Um, because we have lots to work on, so, so, um, one, and then just to let you know that we're gonna get a new policy list, and when that happens from um, our um, contracted people, when they give that to us, then we'll go back and take a look at what else do we need to work on.
Okay, that's just right.
Okay.
Very good, okay.
Okay, adjourned, okay.
Five oh six.
Five oh six.
Thank you for.